No, I will though right on time because we're trying to be timely tonight. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the October 24th Forsyth County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is 5:00 PM and I'm not sure, do we have anyone here to share the invocation and pledge with us? Commissioner Mills, will you do the honors? Please rise if you're amped up.
Let us pray. Thank you, your Lord, for today. Thank you, God, for all your many blessings. God, we are so grateful for our employees. God, so many tonight are here, God, to celebrate their years of service. And God, we thank you so much for the dedication and loyalty within our own county staff. And we thank you, God, for the protection that you put over our employees, for the people within public safety, for the ones that have such demanding jobs. God, we thank you, God, for giving them to our county and to our residents. And God, we just thank you for all the blessings you have provided to this county through the years and for the ones that did this job before us, God, that you were able to be with them then, God, you were able to be with this county when there was not any money, God, but there were people that were willing to dedicate themselves, God, to want what's best for the county. God, thank you, God, for having a heart to serve. Help us, God, to always have a passion for you and for your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the level for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one announcement about the drug summit. You can have it when we do our... Okay. Alrighty. I believe we do have some changes to the agenda this evening. So I am going to start with Commissioner Brown. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have two. Like to postpone admin hearing number one until November 21st.
That's the administrative hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Until November 21st. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero, and that item will be postponed until November the 21st.
And one more, Madam Chair. Believe it or not, old business number two Nancy Bentley, ZA 3807.
Say it's not true.
I would respectfully request to postpone until November 21st.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion also carries with unanimous vote of five to zero and will be postponed until November the 21st. Commissioner Mills, I believe you may have a change or two this evening as well.
I have one. Under new business item number one, God's Olive Tree, ZA 3942, I'd like to make a motion to postpone that item till November 21st.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion does carry with another unanimous vote of five to zero, and new business item number one will be postponed until November the 21st. Any other changes, Commissioner Mills?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, I would like to postpone old business number one, the Haverson Development, to November the 7th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a five to zero vote and will be postponed until November the 7th. Commissioner Levent?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, do you have any changes from the county?
I do not, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would ask, under new business number four, that we postpone that. And can we leave that open? I don't have a good date to bring that back to you. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Just real quickly, Ken, do you recommend that we add a date to that or that we...
Thirty days at a time.
Or we put it on the table?
It's effectively a withdrawal from the agenda and staff will just bring it back. I'm comfortable with that request.
Okay, thank you. That motion would then be for withdrawal?
Withdrawal.
And the second for withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Counselor, did you have any changes for this evening?
Madam Chair, I do not. Thank you.
All right. And are there any other changes from staff? Mr. Brown or Mr. Kennard? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. Motion carries with a five to zero result, and we are on our way. We have several announcements, recognitions this evening, and I'm going to hand the mic over to Commissioner Brown for the first presentation.
I'd like to ask Mr. Omkar Tumani and his father to come forward, please.
Look at all those badges.
All those badges. Please, just stand right. Omkar is one of the Forsyth County's most recent Eagle Scouts. This is a huge achievement that's not taken lightly. It'll set him up for future success in so many areas of leadership. Just turn around a minute. Spin around and show them those badges.
Wow.
I mean, he could go into any branch of law enforcement, the military, and just set it on fire. So we have this proclamation to present to you today. It's a resolution by the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners to Omkar Tumani, his fellow scouts, scoutmaster, and all the leaders of Troop 27 in the Atlanta area council, Northern Ridge District of the Boy Scouts of America, and to all persons to whom these presents shall come. Greetings. Whereas Omkar Tumani is a resident of Forsyth County and a freshman at Lambert High School, whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Omkar Tumani designed and created an outdoor arbor walkway for the Johns Creek Elementary School garden, as well as landscaped plants at the school flagpole, and whereas in conformity with the requirements to attain the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America as determined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review, Omkar Tumani has been found worthy of promotion to the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Forsyth County, Georgia, in recognition of the honor bestowed upon Omkar Tumani, does hereby express its pride in his earning the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America, and best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be recorded in the official minute book of the Board of Commissioners, and that a copy of same be presented to Omkar Tumani. In testimony whereof, we have hereunto affixed the seal of the county of Forsyth, state of Georgia, and signatures of the members of the governing body thereof, given it coming, Georgia, on this 24th day of October 2019, signed, Forsyth County Board of Commissioners.
Next, we have a proclamation that Commissioner Mills is going to present.
Yes, I would like to ask the people with Family Promise if you'll come down. And as they're coming down, I wanted to announce that on October 30th, which is next Wednesday, here's my Vanna White to my left, we have coming to the conference center. It's our 11th drug summit, and I'd like to invite everyone in the community to come. Our Lieutenant Governor Jeff Duncan's going to be there with us, as well as a lot of other speakers, but we've got a doctor from Northside Cherokee that's going to be there to speak about vaping. And we got a lot of different subject matters going to be discussed, and a lot of things about what's happening in our community. So anybody that can come be a part, unless you're trick or treating the night before, then I know you can't come, but if you can, we'd love to have you. And now to Family Promise. This is a proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth County, Georgia. Whereas in October 2016, Family Promise of Forsyth County began operations dedicated to helping the most vulnerable among us, children and families who are experiencing homelessness. And whereas Family Promise of Forsyth County, Inc. partners with over 20 congregations of our area's faith community, which provide a safe place to stay, healthy meals, and volunteer support for guest families, thereby making a real difference in the lives of their neighbors in need. And whereas believing that every child deserves a safe, stable home, Family Promise of Forsyth County, Inc. and its more than 500 volunteers empower families in making their transition from homelessness to sustainable independence. And whereas Family Promise of Forsyth County, Inc. has empowered families to not only find a stable home for their children, but has also given them tools to continue to succeed. Now therefore, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through 27th, 2019, as Family Promise Week in Forsyth County, Georgia, and in so doing urges all citizens to recognize and raise awareness of the issue of children and families who are homeless in our community. And it is signed by all the commissioners. Thank y'all so much for the work you do. Is there something that y'all had to share at all?
We appreciate the support of the county, and many of you have been out to volunteer as well. And so we appreciate the support that you give to the families that we are trying to serve, especially as we continue to take on the issue of affordable housing here in our community for those families.
Thank you for all that you do. Y'all want us to stay up here? Go ahead. Stay up here. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For our next item, can I please have members of our GIS team come forward?
Y'all clean up good.
These are the guys that keep everything rolling here, keep everybody working, keep the public aware, keep us aware, keep all of our systems flowing, and keep them secure and protected. A good presentation on that today from Brandon. So, without further ado, this presentation is a recognition of November 13th as Geographic Information Systems Day or GIS Day. The National Geographic Information Systems Day is November 13th, and an understanding of geographical concepts is crucial in maintaining a balance between the general health and well-being of our residents, continued economic prosperity, and the wise use of natural resources. GIS awareness and education across Forsyth County now plays a critical role within the business process. These efforts eliminate or reduce costs and duplication, facilitate the sharing of data for effective decision-making, and promote ease of use and access to county services through modern technologies. A location-based technology such as geographic information systems are at the forefront, driving business and government to greater efficiencies. Forsyth County is committed to utilizing GIS to better serve its residents and make location-based data and analytics available to all. It is a day for GIS professionals to teach individuals and organizations how to utilize geographic information and realize the benefits of GIS technology. Forsyth County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November the 13th, 2019, as GIS Day. We have a resolution to that effect. Brandon, you want to say anything on behalf of your team?
Yes, sir. Well, I just have to say I have the best GIS team in the country. So I think that's the way I would sum it up. But just so pleased with the services that they're providing to the citizens of Forsyth County. We continue to expand the role of GIS, which is very exciting. And it really does, I think, align with our mantra, which is to become a more data-driven county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
See if we can squeeze everybody in. Get close. Pretend you like each other.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
They do. Absolutely. Our next presentation is going to be presented by our chief, our fire chief, Barry Head.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening to recognize the achievements of a member of the Forsyth County Fire Department. The Executive Fire Officer Program is the flagship program of the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. The four-year program provides senior fire officers with a broad perspective on various facets of fire and emergency medical services administration. The course and accompanying research examine how to exercise leadership when dealing with difficult or unique problems within the communities. Participants in the program enhance their professional development through a unique series of four resident graduate and upper-level college equivalent courses, and the completion of an applied research project for each course. To date, less than 4,400 individuals across the nation have earned the Executive Fire Officer certification. Only 78 of those from Georgia, three of them from your fire department. I'm extremely proud to say that recently another member of the Forsyth County Fire Department has joined their ranks. Division Chief Jason Shivers had joined the Forsyth County Fire Department as a member of the department's first group of career firefighters, and he's held the positions of firefighter, fire lieutenant, inspector general, and currently serves as the chief of technical services division and is an instrumental part of the command staff. And it is my distinct honor and privilege to present the national certification of executive fire officer to Forsyth County Division Chief Jason Shivers.
Pat Carson, if you could come forward for our next presentation.
Commissioners and citizens, tonight we recognize and honor four employees who have reached milestone service anniversaries with Forsyth County during the recent third quarter. On July 20th, John Kennard with the Engineering Department reached 25 years of service. In acknowledgement of his extensive years of service with Forsyth County, Garan Coleman, Assistant County Manager, is here to present the Milestone Service Award. I ask that Mr. Kennard come to the podium, and the Board of Commissioners at this time, and please remain for additional presentations.
So I was speaking to John just before this meeting started, and I asked him how many years have these been his director? And he told me 22 of the 25 has been his director. Now, I served as director of Public Works in Sandy Springs for approximately six years. So I can understand and appreciate what it takes to have a position like that. And if half the stories he's told me are true, I know it's been an eventful and colorful career. We hope you do stay around a few more. We really appreciate the dedication and the service you give. So on behalf of Forsyth County, I want to present you with this 25-year service.
Might as well stay here. We got three more. Sure. The second recipient is Eddie Castleberry with the Parks and Recreation Department, who on August 23rd reached 25 years of service with Forsyth County Government. Jim Pryor, Director of Parks and Recs, is here to present the Milestone Service Award.
Good evening. Eddie Castleberry is a native of Coming, Georgia, attended South Forsyth High School, and upon graduation from South Forsyth, started with Forsyth County in the Public Works Department at the landfill. After working a year at the landfill, he converted over to Parks and Recreation, where in his 24 years of service with Parks and Recreation, has touched almost every park that we've had in our system. Right now, he works on the crew at Sharon Springs Park as a park worker. I'm lucky, I get to come to work every day and come to an office that's climate-controlled. Our park workers aren't as lucky. They work when it's 10 degrees outside with minus wind chills, and they work when it's 120 degrees outside of a heat index. And I appreciate everything they do. Ed has spent well over 24 years working in those conditions to serve our citizens and make our parks beautiful. I would like to present this service award to Eddie Castleberry.
Two more. Yeah. The third recipient is Jeff Loggins with the Water and Sewer Department, who on September 26th reached 25 years of service with Forsyth County Government. Tim Perkins, Director of Water and Sewer, will present the award.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present this to Jeff. I've had the pleasure of working with him since 1995. Jeff began his career with Forsyth County Water and Sewer in 1994 as a crew leader. He was later promoted to a field operations supervisor in 1998. He's held this position for the last 21 years. In his career, just to give you a little framing of it, when he started, we had approximately 7,800 water customers, and we had 251 sewer customers. And today, there's 62,000 water customers and over 34,000 sewer customers. So he's seen quite a change. Back in the day, when he started, we worked out of what we called a pole barn down off Castleberry Road. It had a dirt floor for all the equipment and storage. We had about a 10-by-20 section of concrete floor, propane heater, and maybe two desks. When he started, and I think when he took over the crews, we had three crews on the waterside. Today, Jeff has seven crews under his control, including service workers, approximately 29 people. He spent many, many nights, a lot like what Jim talked about, his park workers, away from his family, in freezing situations, snow and ice, mud up to his rear end, trying to fix water leaks and get it repaired. He's always, you could count on him getting it done. I remember spending a Fourth of July holiday with him, trying to get the water system turned back on to a private well system that the operator had walked away from. And so, like I said, you could always count on Jeff. I've always been amazed at his ability to remember things, where the valves are, where the lines are located. He keeps great records. If we need to know when we have been to a certain location in the last 10 or 15 years, we can call him up, and he's got it on Excel spreadsheet, and he knows when we've been there. He's a huge value to the department and our customers, and we're really privileged to have him. And Jeff, I'd like to present you with this milestone award. Thank you.
The third recipient is, I mean, the fourth, I'm sorry, recipient is Ms. Connie Brooker with Indigent Defense, who on July 24th reached 30 years of service with Forsyth County Government. Dave Gruen, CFO, is here to present the award.
Wow, 30 years. Took me two counties to work that many years, two different places. Connie works in one of those services in the county of over 30 different services that most people may not be familiar with, and perhaps maybe they don't want to be familiar with it if the case comes up. But if they do, you're there to help them. She's worked in the judicial system, the court system, for your whole 30 years, starting out in, I think, the DA's office and pre-trial services, and then last about 17 years in what's called the Indigent Defense Office, which was assigned to me along with some typical finance, internal services when I came here. And I had to learn, he helped me to learn, what does the Indigent Defense Office do? Well, a lot of the public may not be aware that we do not have a DA. We don't have a district attorney, or I'm sorry, public defender. We have the DA. We don't have the public defender on the other side of what's typical in most counties. But we're one of about five or six counties that, instead of going that route, we have an office where, under the county, where the funding is provided, there's a pool of attorneys locally that Connie works with, with her staff. And when someone has a need, they come there interviewed to see if they qualify, and if they have a need for what would be from a public defender's office. But for an attorney to handle their case before the courts, then she makes sure that they get that attorney assigned to them, and works with, again, attorneys, tripartite committee that oversees the program, and so on. So it is a very important, very valuable service to the county in the operation of the court system. So with that, congratulations on 30 years to Connie Brooker of Serving County. So with that, congratulations on 30 years to Connie Brooker of Serving County.
Commissioners, as county manager, I get the honor of thanking retirees for their service, but as you've just heard, you get a little bit more colorful discussion of what employees have accomplished if you get their department director up, so I've asked John to join me. Lynette Weldy, will you please come forward? She's coming forward. I just mentioned, as you've heard before, we appreciate our employees. The board has put in place benefits and salaries in recognition of the value of the employees that serve this community. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize an employee who recently retired from the county. I'll do the formal part, and then I'll let John do the ad lib. Lynette served as a right-of-way supervisor with Forsyth County Engineering Department and served the county for 20 years. Her last day was October 15th, and so on behalf of the board, my job is to congratulate you on your service, wish you the best for your retirement, and then turn it over to John to have the opportunity to see what he might want to say for the people in the audience, but thank you very much.
Lynette's been a valued employee for us for many years, and you know, she's really educated herself in right-of-way acquisitions. She's been a tremendous asset to the county, and we really, really appreciate her years of service, and we really hate to see her retire, but we just want to congratulate her, and we know that she'll be happy, and we will definitely miss her.
So at this time, Karen is going to read the rules of the meeting for our public comments section.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting. One, for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have no speakers signed up for this first section. If someone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearings of October 3rd, 2019?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a unanimous vote of five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session of October the 8th?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special called meeting of October the 18th, 2019?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And you have, and that is also a unanimous result. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that also carries with a five to zero vote. Moving into public hearings, Karen is going to remind everyone of the rules for public hearing procedures.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For public hearing portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who would like to speak should complete a public hearing form, which is available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Amy Conrad, if you could please brief us on our first public hearing?
AL 190828, located in Commission District Number Two. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Alpha Bytes LLC, DBA Never Enough Time. Name licensee is Michael Doyle, for an application to sell malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises at their place of business located at 6655 Town Square, Suite 1250.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. Our public hearing is now open. Please come forward if you'd like to speak in favor of this application.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Michael Doyle. Obviously, I would like to speak in favor of the proposed motion. This evening, I am the name licensee.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to reserve the rest of your time, I'll see if anybody else wants to speak. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition to this application? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Please vote. And the public hearing is now closed. I'm going to hand this over to Dennis Brown. This is in your district.
Yes, we're very aware of Never Enough Time. They've operated a restaurant, a fabulous restaurant already, and we're looking forward to opening this one at Halcyon, so crab cakes are good, too. I'm ready for a motion, Madam Chair, unless anyone has any questions.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve the alcohol license to sell malt beverages, beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises for Alpha Bytes LLC, doing business as Never Enough Time, 6655 Town Square, Suite 1250, Alpharetta 30005. Name licensee, Michael Doyle, AL 190828.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero for approval. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the kind words.
Ms. Conrad, if you could please brief us on our second public hearing?
AL 190826, located in Commission District Number Three. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Racetrack Petroleum Inc., doing businesses Racetrack Store Number 2537. Name licensee is John C. Logan III, for an application to sell malt beverages and wine by the package on the premises at their place of business located at 1385 McFarland Parkway.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
We have a motion, several seconds. Please vote. And the public hearing is now open with a unanimous vote of five to zero. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name's John.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your full name?
My name's John, John Logan.
Okay. Go ahead, you just need to have it for the record.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, we would like to get the alcohol permit for the new McFarland store that we're building, so we're just basically taking down the old one, putting the new one up. Just want to transfer that license over or open up a new one.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And we're now closed with a vote of five to zero. I'm going to hand this off to Commissioner Levent. It is in your district.
Are you the license holder in the other location of McFarland?
No, sir. No, sir. Just this one. They've removed me from the other one. I'm just on this one now.
I got you. So you'll be on this one. Are you going to be a part of the daily operations of this location?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And you've read our ordinances, and you understand, and you've got some kind of training program, I'm sure?
Yes, sir.
As good as you guys are? Excellent.
Yes, sir. We've got the electronic training, or the electronic license scanning. We also have, we have initial training. We actually go through mock alcohol sales. We also have the bars that visits our locations twice every month. We also do quarterly assessments and training, and then we also have a responsible vendor log training that they do every day.
Outstanding, thank you. And when do you think your opening day will be?
In the next couple of months. I'd have to look. I don't know exactly, but...
By the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the license request under AL 190826 for John C. Logan at Racetrack to serve the malt beverages and beer and wine by the package on the premises of Racetrack.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And that motion for approval carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing number three, Ms. Conrad?
AL 190827. This is, again, located in Commission District Number Three. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Siraje LLC, doing businesses Alpharetta Marathon. Name licensee is Janak Patel, for an application to sell malt beverages and wine by the package on the premises at their place of business located at 5715 Atlanta Highway.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And the motion passes, and we are now open. If there is anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Janak Patel, applying for a license for Alpharetta...
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Janak Patel.
Okay.
I'm applying for a license for Alpharetta Marathon.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And we are now closed. I'm going to hand this off to Commissioner Levent. Again, this is your district.
So you've probably heard the same line of questions I asked earlier. Will you, you're going to be the license holder?
Yes, sir.
And will you be part of the everyday business?
Yes, sir.
And have you read our ordinances and understand them?
Yes, sir.
And what is your training program you have set forth for you and your employees?
They're told every day to check licenses.
You haven't hired a professional company to take them through a training program?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. Our suggestion is, we can't, we don't make you do that, but our suggestion is that you do. If you come back in front of us, we have the options of suspending or revoking licenses should you sell underage or violate any of the rules. And there's also certain things that are on that that may cross over and count strikes against you that have to do with certain paraphernalia items and such like that, so you may want to really get in depth into reading that because it's your business, it's your livelihood. Okay? Thank you, sir. I make a motion to approve the Janak Patel, AL 190827, for the Siraje LLC, DBA Alpharetta Marathon, located at 5715 Atlanta Highway, to serve the malt beverages and beer and wine by the package on the premise.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And the motion carries with a five to zero result.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Conrad, number four.
AL 190829, again, in Commission District Number Three. This is a request for approval of an alcohol license for Bag Star 7 LLC, doing businesses BP Express. Name licensee is Naveed Tahar Beg, for an application to sell malt beverages and wine by the package on the premises at their place of business located at 6025 Atlanta Highway.
Thank you. Getting their drink on in District Three. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. We are now open with a five to zero vote. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Naveed Tahar Beg for Bag Star 7 LLC for BP Express, applying for the alcohol license.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And the public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Levent, if you'd like to handle this, in your district?
Thank you, sir. I'll give you the same line of questions, just so we're fair with everybody. Will you be part of the everyday business?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And have you read the ordinance?
Yes, I did.
And you understand all the other things that could hold strikes against your ordinance? It's not just the beer and wine sales?
Yes, I do.
Excellent. And do you have a training program for your employees?
Hiring someone to train or training ourselves?
Just so they understand the rules and regulations clearly?
We do 100% ID. We scan them, and we train them on a daily basis as well.
Excellent, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Everything's in order, it appears, according to staff, so therefore I make a recommendation for approval for AL 190829 for Naveed Beg as the license holder for the malt beverages, beer and wine by the package sales on the premises.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing number five, Mr. Brown.
Zon application 3953. This is located in Commission District Number One. It's a county-initiated request to rezone 5.72 acres from R1 to M2. The property is located at 843 Canton Highway in Coming, Georgia.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please vote. And we are now closed. Commissioner Cooper, this is in your district, but it might be, I don't know who we want to have.
I'll be glad to...
This is our own property.
This is our property.
Yeah.
And the topography on this really is not in the least bit conducive for any residential development whatsoever, and again, it's ours. So for the potential of future commercial use on that, or county use, whatever we choose, I would like to go ahead and make the motion.
Go ahead.
And I move that we rezone the 5.72 acres from R1 to M2 of ZA 3953.
Second.
At 843 Canton Highway.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Public hearing number six, Mr. Gerard.
Madam Chair, board members, item number six is a public hearing related to a proposed abandonment of a section of county right-of-way within Era Road, AKA Old Triple Road, identified as 1.166 acres, line and landlots 929 and 944 of the Third District. Board members, hopefully in your agenda packet, you're going to see a couple of documents, one of which is a resolution of abandonment, which sets forth the basis upon which this abandonment is brought to you. Also attached to that resolution toward the back, you should see a plat, which is part of the statutory requirements with respect to abandonment, that shows the specific section of county roadway for which abandonment is requested. I hope you see a section of roadway that has sort of a sharp left hook in it that connects Triple Road with Era Drive. That is the portion of roadway that is proposed to be abandoned. The cumulative acreage of this right-of-way is 1.66 acres. Let me check that, board members.
We have 1.166.
1.166 acres, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The abandonment rules require that we run a legal ad for two weeks, which we have done. That actually, the legal ad is in your packet. We are supposed to notify affected property owners. They have been notified based upon the information that has been available to me. The resolution provides that you are declaring that there is no longer any public interest in this 1.166... interest in this 1.166 acre of right-of-way. And so, Madam Chair, following a public hearing, if the Board of Commissioners adopts this resolution, then this abandonment will become operational. I want to mention one thing to you in the resolution. If you turn to the second page where it actually is, you know, it is hereby resolved, I want to read some language to you. "This resolution shall become effective upon the occurrence of all of the following: the acquisition by Halverson Suburban Centers of Forsyth County tax parcels, and the two tax parcels are identified; the submittal by Halverson to the county of a combination plat; and three, approval of that plat." So, there are some conditions precedent to this because this is part of otherwise an ongoing development. So, once that occurs, then this abandonment would be deemed effective. And at that point, then, we would issue all of the requisite deeds, et cetera. So, Madam Chair, that's my presentation. Public hearing is in order.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
To move.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. We're now open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this abandonment, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this abandonment, please come forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we are now closed with a vote of five to zero. Since this is in District One, I'm going to hand it over to Commissioner Cooper.
I move for approval of this as described by counsel.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a five to zero result in favor of abandonment. At this time, Karen is going to announce any public comment speakers that may be here.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're now at the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting. There are no forms that have been submitted. If anyone would like to address the board during this time, please come forward. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. We'll now move on to old business. For those who weren't here at agenda adoption, there has been a postponement of item number one, Halverson, to the November 7th meeting of item number two, Nancy Bentley, to the November 21st agenda, which takes us to new business. New business number one, revolving around God's Olive Tree Incorporated, has been postponed until November 21st, which brings us to number two. Mr. Gruen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I draw the Commissioner's attention to, there should be a copy of these two pages we placed at your station in the meeting. It's under the letterhead of Georgia Mountains Regional Commission, GMRC. This item, we placed on the agenda, knowing this needed to be approved and transmitted back to DCA before the end of this month, and knowing that DCA and GMRC had finished their approval process and were sending us the letter. But we just got the letter on Tuesday, and so we wanted you all to have that. And so, that's official. And then we've attached the resolution to it for action tonight. Whereupon Board's approval, we will transmit this back to DCA tomorrow on the 25th. And the important thing is that this keeps us in our qualified local government status for another year.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Gruen? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt the annual update to the impact fee program capital improvement element, which includes the 2018 financial report, schedule improvements with the CWP addendum as presented August 1, 2018 regular meeting, as presented by the Chief Financial Officer.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a unanimous five to zero result. Number three, Mr. Gruen again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We come tonight to first opportunity and perhaps the final step in our budget process for fiscal year 2020. This is the adoption of the budget resolution for next year by the commission, if they're so inclined to do so tonight. Just for the record, I'll just read a couple of numbers in. First of all, this covers 21 different funds of the county budgeted funds, including the general fund. The total of all these funds combined is a total budget, if you want to call it a countywide budget, of $373,662,754. And of that, the general fund amounts to $149,692,067. If the board is so inclined, we're ready for adoption of the budget for next year.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
And also, I'm sorry, in the motion, I apologize, I didn't add to it on the agenda item, we've also included board, requesting board approval to apply the 4% that is, budget is a merit compensation increase for next year. And in so doing that, we'd also apply a 2% increase to the salary range schedule across the board.
Thank you for that. Do you need that included in the motion, those approvals?
Yes, we can add that to the motion of adopting the resolution.
Thank you. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Before we do that, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
I know that, I just was privy to seeing some emails that went back and forth between Mary Kirkpatrick and Greg Dolezal, Sandra Dolezal, about the assessments for this year. And I know the county manager and I had had a conversation, especially about the commercial assessments and how high they were and how many are being, I think, so far, 640 have been recalculated. I think that's what's shown in this table that was sent to him, which is, last year, there was 289, and 640 so far this year. My question is, are we in any type of danger or quandary or concern of the budget next year? I mean, did we have an inflated vision of our tax digest? I mean, are we looking at it and thinking that the value of it was higher than what it actually was?
Well, for my eyes, I haven't seen any evidence yet that would indicate that. But I'll add again, knowing that there is an appeal process every year, and people can appeal their assessments, their taxable value, it's another reason why we budget at 97% of the tax digest in our budget. So, there is room to accommodate if there's some reduction in actual taxes collected. But that's a way for that, without getting involved into that independent process.
Mr. Mills, I will submit to you that there are jurisdictions in the metro area that have had a volume of challenges, even in sort of a class volume of challenges, that it has called into question the legitimacy of the digest. I get that. I don't see that at all here. But I understand the point you're making, but I don't think that's here.
When I asked her a little bit about that, too, because I was concerned also, they got a lot of appeals, but she also said a lot of them have withdrawn those appeals. Because I guess they reassessed to see that their properties, not all, but some of them saw their properties were actually appraised correctly, although they've gone up, but they have withdrawn.
I mean, some of them were definitely too low. I mean, I mean, definitely...
Too high.
No. Some of them were too low, and they were very behind and needed to be raised. But I don't think that, I mean, I think there was definitely a problem in raising some of them 300%.
That's right.
Especially when there is not, and I tell you, a big issue that I had was that our county has been out buying right-of-way, more right-of-way than I probably in the history of our county at one time. And it's a very hard argument when you're the one out appraising, and you're appraising and paying one value, and then your own government's out appraising for much higher than what you're out appraising and paying.
I wouldn't say, we've been paying top dollar for right-of-way lately.
We have been.
We have. It's been, we've had to spend on property, it has been...
We have. But there's some discrepancy there. And those are recent appraisals.
Well, as we all know, we don't direct the tax assessors operations whatsoever, but I think it might be something worth looking at if there are people who need to be brought up to, for a long period of time that has elapsed since they needed to be reevaluated, that perhaps they look at some sort of a stair stepping.
And I'm glad, I'm thankful that we don't, and we shouldn't, and that's great. But I do, what concerns me from a finance standpoint is that...
Depending on that number.
It is dependent upon it, and we're dependent upon the budget. And if all of a sudden next year, we see there's a big drop in the digest because we've superinflated it this year, then we've got a problem. That's my only concern.
Sorry, turn it off. You raise a good point. As we talked about, I think going into next year's budget process for '21, which will start probably in about February, I think we'll go in with an expectation of a leaner year. And in preparation for that, I had a recent directors meeting. I directed department directors to start planning on coming forward with efficiencies. It's something that the private sector, you do constantly. I think it's something that we need to do to look at whether we can learn to operate what we're doing today with a leaner budget. And in part, that addresses whether it's the success of appeals or simply a slowdown in the economy. But we're cognizant of that. I think we had the third rating agency with us today, Fitch Ratings. They had some good questions. They talked about how they'll be stress testing our budget to look at the ability of the county to move forward. And so, you raise a good point. I think that we're wary of where next year may be, and things may be leaner. But I was just looking at the data, and certainly the number of commercial appeals more than doubled, but the number of parcels impacted by those appeals went from 4,033 to 4,076. So, there was a larger number of appeals than the increase in the number of parcels impacted. Obviously, when you're talking commercial, those parcels can be huge or have substantial value. So, we're wary, as you are. But as Dave said, we budget conservatively, and that's why we anticipate ending this year with a surplus as we have in each of the past years. But we're certainly cognizant of the potential for those increases. But I think, as another commissioner mentioned, in some cases, the issue is not whether this year's is correct, but whether last year's was understated. And I think that's part of what's showing up, at least in some of those increases. People generally appeal if their appraisal is too low.
Are there any further questions, items of discussion? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Move we adopt the FY 2020 budget with approval to apply the 4% merit compensation increase as budgeted and approval to apply a 2% increase to the FY 2020 Forsyth County salary range schedule while maintaining the salary range spread as established by the 2019 compensation survey as briefed by staff.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries with unanimous vote of five to zero. Item number four of new business was withdrawn from the agenda. Item number five, Mr. Gerard.
Madam Chair, Board members, item number five is an 11th Amendment to the lease contract with respect to the Forsyth County water and sewers infrastructure. We had a water and sewer authority meeting prior to this board meeting where bond counsel went through the need for this. This is part of the transactional underpinning of the county's operation and funding of the Forsyth County Water and Sewer Authority's system. And in exchange for that, we also pledge the county's finances with respect to funding any debt of the authority. And of course, we do have a water and sewer bond transaction forthcoming. Therefore, this is needed, Madam Chair. This is simply the other side of what we did at 4:30.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Move we...
Go ahead.
Move we approve the resolution authorizing the execution of 11th Amendment to lease contract and other documents relating to the Water and Sewer Authority's revenue bonds as briefed by the county attorney.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Item number six, Mr. Gerard.
Madam Chair, Board members, item number six is actually a byproduct of the work session of two days ago. And at that work session, the Board of Commissioners took up for consideration Post Road. That was the agenda item. You may recall that you added to the agenda during the adoption of the agenda to take on some additional considerations. So, at the end of the work session, I hope I got this right, the outcome was to adopt a resolution, and this is something to be advanced to the Georgia Department of Transportation. And it does a couple of things. Number one, it requests that the speed limit on Post Road be lowered to 40 miles an hour. This was language you wanted in there, if supported by any necessary speed study. And that those areas on Post Road that are school zones be lowered to 30 miles per hour, the speed limit, if, again, supported by a speed study. And then, three, you ask that GDOT delay installation of the R-Cut at Post and Bentley pending a further traffic study, following the county's installation of a traffic signal at Post and Pittman. All of this, if the Board of Commissioners adopt this resolution, would be delivered to GDOT for their consideration. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
No, ma'am. I just would like to make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously with a vote of five to zero. And we have postponed the administrative hearing until, on number one, until November the 21st. I understand that we do not have a need for an executive session this evening.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
So, I am going to ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously with a five to zero vote, and we are adjourned at 6:06 PM. Land speed record.